I will call this meeting to order.
Chair Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Ramon?
Here.
Cal Niederman?
Here.
John Mass.
Here.
Please join me in a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Festa Dagel will do some recognitions now.
Madam President and Governing Board, I'm here to talk to you, well, I'm not, students are, about our travel, that our travel clubs that we have at elementary school, middle school, and high school. And so, we do a lot of other travel for CTE, for sports, but I thought it was important to talk about these four clubs that are specifically focused on travel and how important travel is as part of the educational process. And so, student travel supports confidence, grit, making friends, perspective, and knowledge of the world all around them. And so, I'd like to take a few minutes to recognize students and advisors from the following travel-focused clubs. They're each going to come up and tell us a little bit about their summer travel over, for last year and what they've learned. And so, Mrs. Bitterman's going to help us with the slideshow. So, we're going to start with Lake Havasu High School Educational Tour Group. If Mrs. Burke can come up and the students. And so, I'm going to introduce Gabby and Angelina, who's going, who are going to tell us a little bit about their trip to Costa Rica and Panama.
Hi, my name is Gabriela Pavi Niti, and this summer, I was able to go to Costa Rica and Panama with ETG. Not only did we visit Costa Rica and Panama, but we also unexpectedly went to Dallas and Houston. Although we experienced some delays, our trip was amazing, especially with our chaperones and our tour guide, Chris. On this trip, I learned about the Embera Indigenous Tribe in Panama. Today, they continue to preserve their culture through their clothing, food, jewelry, art, community, and traditional body paint. Visitors are able to purchase their jewelry and other art pieces or be painted with their traditional body paint. We also had the opportunity to dance, play, and speak with the members of the Embera Tribe during our visit. Not only did I learn about history, culture, and nature on this trip, but I learned how to survive without luggage. Panama and Costa Rica were beautiful. Some things that I saw were animals such as toucans, monkeys, and sloths, natural land formations like the Arinol volcano and La Fortuna waterfall, statues of massive animals that roamed the Earth many years ago, the hot springs in Costa Rica, the process of making chocolate from cacao, and the ruins of Old Panama. My biggest takeaways from this trip are to always seize the opportunity to make new friendships, never be afraid to try something new, and lastly, always pack spare clothes in your airport backpack because you never know when you'll have to check your carry-on item or when you'll get it back. Penelope Riley said, "It is not the destination where you end up, but the mishaps and memories you create along the way." As the Embera Tribe says, "Beabua," or "thank you."
Hi, I'm Angelina. I also went on the Costa Rica and Panama trip this summer. So, as Gabby said, we did have some unexpected delays. We got stuck in Texas for a little bit, but I honestly felt that that made us all closer as a group. I came home with some friendships that I never thought I would have, who are honestly some of my best friends today. This was us getting, finally getting to Panama, the first group to arrive. The struggles that we faced while traveling were definitely hard, but I think it taught us that not everything goes to plan and that, you know, it's kind of, stuff happens, but, you know, we figured it out in the end. Some of the amazing things I saw were, well, one was an armadillo. I was sitting outside one day and an armadillo came running right by my feet. It was incredible. I screamed. I called my mom. It was awesome. We also went to an indigenous tribe, and here, we got some of the traditional body paint. As you can see, me and one of our teachers, Mr. Bangson, ended up getting the same one. And that picture on the left was what you saw when you walked outside of our little hotel bunk at one of the places we stayed, which was very awesome. So, if I took anything away from this, I would say that you should always take the opportunity to learn new things, make new friends, and just, it was a great experience. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Burke, Gabby, and Angelina. So, the Educational Tour Group has been around since at least 1992. I know it's probably long before then. So, in the 80s, potentially before then. So, we're talking 40 years. There's been 40 years of students traveling, and I know the Governing Board approves this, and you kind of think, "Well, what's the impact?" And so, when we think about students who traveled 40 years ago through Lake Havasu High School and the impact that it makes, it's really huge. So, thank you very much. So, our next club is going to be Close Up. So, Close Up is near and dear to my heart. The Close Up Club was around in the 80s and 90s, and it went dormant. And so, when I came and taught civics, when I was in high school, I really wanted to be in the Close Up Club. There was one at my high school, but I didn't, I thought it was too cool. And it, but it's really what I wanted to do. And so, when I became a teacher, I brought back the Close Up Club. And so, Close Up's a little bit different. It's a nonprofit civic organization, and the focus is on supporting students and their understanding of civics and constitutional principles. And so, here to talk about Close Up is James Jouse.
So, I, this is my first year going on the trip. Oh, thank you. So, this is my, last year was my first year going on the trip. I've never heard of it before because I'd just moved to Arizona the year prior after living on the East Coast my whole life. And it definitely helped me get out of my shell. We also helped me meet some new people that I would never talk to regardless. As you can see, we got to meet with Representative Paul Gosar and his secretary in his office. A bunch of stuff in there. He has, I believe he has his astronaut helmet, doesn't he?
That was Mark Kelly's. Yeah, we met with Mark Kelly's office, Gosar, and Kristen Sinema's office.
Yeah, and as you can see, we see all the monuments. We saw Washington DC during the day. We didn't go to it during the day. It was too crowded. That night, we got right up close to where you could touch it. And so, go, oh, how do I, okay. We saw New York City. We saw the Capitol Building, which we got right up close to the Capitol on the steps, where we took pictures of each other, learning. And we also took a tour of the Capitol, too. We went underground to the secret, the quote-unquote "secret railroad" that the senators used to travel from each building.
So, we were actually pretty lucky. I had contacted Mark Kelly's office, and he gave us, one of his aides gave us the private tour instead of the one that the public gets. So, we got to go on the underground subway that only they get to go on, and his aide took us on that and some other places in the Capitol that some other people don't get to go. So, that was an amazing part of the trip last year.
Also, this picture of New York might look peaceful, but it's exactly as it is in the movies. There's, there's quite a few honking, quite a few cars honking. And we saw some places, like, we were right up within the picture, with the White House. We were at the gates. There's not a picture of the White House because I believe everybody should be able to go there and see it for themselves because it's that much of an experience. But we saw the peace vigil where they're constantly protesting. It's been up since, before the Vietnam War, I believe. And so, it's been there for a long time. Saw the Marine Corps' War Memorial. On the left is two freshmen that went, and they're hopping on the back of one of our friends, Tristan, who's from Minnesota or North Dakota, I believe. So, we met a lot of people there. There were a couple of kids from Alaska, too. There were about five of them. And the biggest takeaways were, it's definitely an experience that you learn from the history and the impact of it all. It can, it means a lot to different people, but to me, it just goes to show like what, what the culture and the foundations of our government were built on and also our country. And so, this also inspired me to look further into these careers and like life goals. I'm also going again this year to see even more of it. And like I said earlier, the friendships and the relations you make are, even within your own school, like, the freshman I was talking about just earlier, I've never talked to him at all. I've only seen him at the meetings, but we got so close. And Bryce actually does jet ski racing on the weekends. I didn't know that. So, yeah, it's definitely an experience. I would recommend it to everybody.
So, thank you, James, and thank you, Mrs. Gray, for taking them on this trip. If anyone ever wants to talk to me about Close Up, I can talk to you for a long time. So, next, we have Thunderbolt, and Thunderbolt Middle School, and they're going to talk about their Educational Tour Club. They went to Florida, the Everglades, and the Florida Keys.
So, on the, on the Florida trip, we went beach snorkeling. We swam with dolphins. We did a squid dissection, guided Everglades tour. We visited a turtle hospital. We kayaked in the mangroves, which was pretty cool. There was a lot of jellyfish. We went ocean reef snorkeling. We also hiked the Everglades and did hands-on with coral reef critters.
When we were at the turtle hospital, we found out very many different things, like how it opened in 18, 1986, and over 3,000 turtles have been released since that opening. The Turtle Hospital is dedicated to perform surgeries and rehab for injured and sick turtles. Currently, they have around 12 patients that they are currently working on, 18 permanent residents, and 10, 10 turtles have been released in the last year.
Um, we went to dolphins plus bayside. We saw, that's where the dolphins are, but they're extremely intelligent mammals. They are not fish. They are endangered and protected. Their echolocation is so sensitive, it can detect surgical metal in humans as like braces or like knees. They can swim sideways, and it's home to six dolphins currently.
Mr. Musketi, where are you going this year?
So, this next year's trip, with Mr. Zematell's permission, because I didn't want to overstep with the high school, our next trip is Philadelphia, New York City, and Washington DC as well. And then, we're going to go into a rotation where, last year prior to Florida, we went to Boston, which was, again, just an amazing trip. These groups are, you know, we always have a lot of fun and just, we learn so much, and we have a lot that go out with, yeah.
So, did you like science, history of science?
We alternate, we, yeah, we alternate between science and social studies.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you, Peyton, and Isabella, and Mr. Musketi. I'm sorry, Mr. Musketi, how many students did you travel with?
Uh, this last year, we went with 39. Before that was about 37. Before that was 42-ish. It always hovers right around the 40 range.
And then, Mrs. Burke?
We had 44 total, and two went home, but we had 42 total after our little snafu in Houston.
And then, do you, where are you going this year?
Uh, we're doing the capitals of Scandinavia, so we're going to Norway, Denmark, Finland, Sweden, and Estonia.
Very nice. It's where my son was supposed to go, like, one of the COVID years.
Yes, COVID, COVID brought back.
Yes. And then, Mrs. Gray, how many traveled with Close Up?
Um, this year, we had 10. Before, there was 18, and I think this year's going to be pretty big. Five out of the 10.
Are returning.
Going again.
Awesome.
And we had a lot in our last two years.
So cool. Very good. Thank you. Up next, we have our newest club, the Jamaica Jet Club. And so, Mrs. Black and Mrs. Kendrick, will you come up with Kalen? So, Kalen, will you tell us a little bit about the Jet Club in its very first year?
Okay. Um, on our Jet Group trip, I learned about rock formations, like how sediment compacted and just came together to create like rocks and mountains and stuff. I learned about water erosion, like how the water erodes all the canyons and stuff. I learned how to kayak and that I did not like kayaking. I learned the reason behind dams. When we went to the Glen Canyon Dam, I learned how to spend my time efficiently and responsibly, like in the mornings when I had a certain amount of time until I had to go out for breakfast and stuff. The importance of budgeting at like gift shops and when buying lunch or something, and how to share space with others in our hotel rooms. It got a little hard for my roommates sometimes, but yeah. There we go. Some amazing things I saw were the Grand Canyon, Antelope Canyon, Horseshoe Bend, the Glen Canyon Dam, and Bedrock City. And that's just five things out of the many places we went in the span of five days. My biggest takeaways were, nature can be beautiful if you take the time to look. Even if it's just like, like in-state, it can still be really awesome. And yeah, it's important to get out there and see new things. I never thought that I'd be able to go to the Grand Canyon until I was at least a teenager or an adult, but it was a really cool experience. You can learn a lot about someone on a five-day trip. Like everyone else said, I made some really close connections with all the people that were on the trip, and it's nice to spend time away from home. So, even though I had some doubts about spending almost a week away from the rest of my family, it was just really fun, and it was nice to just have a break and get to see some cool stuff. And that's it.
Do you have plans of where you're going this year? Is it the same?
Yeah.
Same?
Our, our kind of idea is to give them a soft introduction into travel so that we don't step on the toes. It's, it's a little more, more safe. They're closer to their parents, so if they're just not going to be able to do it, which they all did, there was 10 of them that went, and they did a great job. But it's, it's in elementary school, I think the parents are a little bit more comfortable of them staying a little closer to home. And then, it also supports our, our curriculum in the elementary school, knowing about Arizona.
Thank you so much. So, I know sometimes you just vote on it, but realize that this is the impact, the academic impact that educational travel can have, and these are just like a sliver of stories. And the other thing really to consider is the importance of tax credit. This is, these are all tax credit-supported clubs, and for many students, they, they wouldn't be able to go without it. But I wanted to make sure everyone realized, like, it's not just a fun time. It really is a learning opportunity, and students learn so much about themselves and the communities around them. So, thank you all for presenting.
Ready for the next one?
Very good. So, I'd also like to present about the Arizona Project Wet. It is sponsored by the University of Arizona, and it happens every single year with fourth-grade students, and I don't think we really talk about it as a school community a lot. And so, really thinking about the importance of STEM education that starts all the way in elementary school, and the importance of learning about water, especially based on where we live. And we see that reoccurring very intentionally, but this is a fourth-grade endeavor. We see kids on the Colorado in middle school, and so, then we've seen courses like marine science added in high school. And so, there is high interest related to water. And so, if I can have Mrs. Garcia and Mrs. Benal come up while we chat. So, I just wanted to share about what the Water Festival is. And the Water Festival is really designed by the University of Arizona, and it's a partnership with Lake Havasu City and the school district. And so, this is something that is free of charge to us. They provide all of the learning except for the time that the teachers take to become water experts and teach the children. And so, Project Wet has been going on since 2000. They hold festivals across Arizona, and the mission is to meet community needs based on research-based education strategies to help students gain knowledge about, about water stewardship. You can see that they've reached over 200,000 students, 7,500 teachers, 11,000 parents, and 90, almost 9,500 volunteers. And so, the Water Festival here started in 2016 and has taken place annually, except in 2021, annually every year. So, thus far, there's been eight festivals, and a ninth is coming in 2025. And you can see the impact on volunteers, classes, teachers, and most importantly, students over that time. And so, what is gained from participating? Teachers get professional development that support their understanding of water. There's water curriculum that's focused on the festival to prepare students, is access to science and water education. There is a fun event that students and teachers go on, and this also takes place with volunteers. So, there are a lot of community volunteers that support this, and this is knowledge and training in water stewardship and conservation, and the chance to impact youth by fostering a sustainable water future for Arizona, which, as we all know, is so important. So, we're going to, I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Benal and Mrs. Garcia to talk specifically about the impact that they see with their students. Mrs. Benal is at Ora Grande Classical Academy, and Mrs. Garcia is at Smoke Tree Elementary School.
Hello. As you can see, here's some of the festivals they set up usually out on the island at the ballfields, and there's six or seven different stations that they go to. And what they're really understanding is how the water isn't just a water cycle like they learn in first grade. It's not always going from cloud to ground to river to, how it's really a water web and how the water is really important to every living thing. What you see here in this hands-on activity, the kid in the red is my kid, that's why I have a picture of him, but he, they were showing how if one water well gets contaminated, when they're pumping out of the other water wells there to the right, those water wells will draw the groundwater and also be polluted. So, it's just a lot of nice visuals. There's relay races that they do trying to conserve water, which is a fun one. They have a different hands-on activity where they're pumping water, and then they are moving throughout the atmosphere as water, and they're collecting beads. One of the favorite things, we teach several lessons to prepare so that they know what they're looking at when they arrive, but their favorite one that I do is the transpiration. We go out and you put a baggie over a leaf, and then you seal it, and then an hour or two, you come back, and there's water in the bag. The kids just think that's amazing. So, you're showing that there's even water moving through the plants, and you, you have the evidence to show it. There's really neat hands-on activities involved with the Water Festival.
So, I don't have pictures. Those are students, but yes, they really love this. We also talk about how that relates to our curriculum. They are able to see how this relates into geology. They're able to see how this relates later on into water conservation when we see our last unit in science, and they are able to see how that affects in our city, where the water goes, the watershed, where do we collect, how do we conserve, how do we, where do all this go to? So, she touched on many of the things that we did talk about, but the kids really look forward to. They love the hands-on, and they, they just look forward to this field trip that we go to. So, thank you.
So, I, I just think it's so important to think about the impact that teachers have in the work that they do, even to bring fourth graders on a field trip. There's a lot of work that's involved, and this happens across the state. And so, here's just some of what was said by volunteers. Volunteers are everyone from city employees, people who work for the Parks Department, BLM, retired folks, families. And so, you can see that people have very positive feedback about the Water Festival. And then, there's some quotes from community volunteers who talk about the beneficial nature of the program for both students and their families. And here's the outcomes. You can see that seven different schools participated last year, 16 teachers, and then some of the pre-to-post knowledge that the, the students shared. And so, really thinking about the importance of that hands-on STEM learning and thinking about making connections and the importance of the actual Water Festival itself. Again, this is just more data that U of A shared with us, but really, really them thanking us. When I told them that I wanted to share, they were, they were very ecstatic. But just the work that the city does and the school district does in partnership with U of A to work on water learning. And so, again, they look forward to participating, and we're really excited to work with our partners and our teachers moving forward. And again, thank you to the teachers that were here.
Thank you for sharing that. I got to volunteer for that organization one year, and it was really awesome. In order to illustrate how many gallons of water a person uses a day in Arizona, they had two teams do a relay with buckets of water. I don't know if they still do that, but it's fascinating to see the impact that that had on students, how much water it really takes us to live. And it's a worthwhile activity. I would ask you to think about volunteering with this. Great project for the community. All right. At this point, we have Carol Noakowski, who will speak about the Lake Havasu City Education Association.
All right. Good evening, President Harvey and members of the board, and welcome back, community and all, to the 2425 school year. We had a great experience this summer. At the end, we were able to host lunch for our new teachers and meet and greet with them, and we are excited for them and always happy that they have chosen to Lake Havasu Unified School District. I do want to remind everyone that we are a wall-to-wall association, which means our members include both classified and certified staff from across the district. And we also have members that are student teachers, retired educators, substitutes, and we offer a community membership as an associative membership for those that support the association. So, one last thing, always remember, election is coming up, so make sure you're registered. And that's it for tonight. Thanks.
Leanna, do we have any calls to the public?
No.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept it as stated?
I move that we accept it as stated.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Chair Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Cal Niederman?
Yes.
John Mass.
Yes.
Our Superintendent, Dr. Stone, will lead us in our discussion items.
So, thank you, Madam President and members of the board. As you know, the legislative session has ended, and when that happens, we all receive their updates from the trust in relation to our policies that may have changed based on statute. So, anyone who's from the community and looking on our board docs, these documents are there, and you will see in the green the language that has been added, and in the red, any language that has been deleted. And I'll just give a little bit about the reason for each of these. So, the first one's fiscal accounting and financial reporting. So, this change clarifies that school districts have flexibility regarding the number of statutorily required days, 180 days, if the district maintains the requisite number of instructional minutes. So, you can see there that it used to say you had to have 180 days and the instructional minutes, and now it is an or. You can do 180 days.
And now it is an or, you can do one hundred and eighty days or the required instructional minutes. And just as a reminder, this is a discussion item because anytime we bring policies, there's a first read and they're available for the next month for the community and for yourselves to review. And we will bring them back the following meeting to actually vote on the adoption of these for our policy memo. The next one's policy three dash four oh one, safety and emergency management. This is related to House Bill twenty-one seventy-four. It requires convicted sex offenders upon registration to submit information regarding the individual's legal custody of a child and that child's specific school. Provisions of the Criminal Code and Title thirteen have been amended to require the registered sex offender to notify the local sheriff if the student's enrollment status changes. So if they enroll in our district, but then they un-enroll the student, they're required to report to the sheriff's office within seventy-two hours. Policy four dash one oh one is the board authority to employ. So based on House Bill twenty-nine oh six, this amends ARS fifteen dash five thirty-six and ARS fifteen five thirty-eight point oh one. And it requires that school districts issue contracts to certified teachers on or after March fifteenth. Senate Bill fifteen fifty-eight adds ARS fifteen dash five oh nine to require that school district applicants disclose specific listed crimes against children. And Senate Bill fifteen sixteen, fifteen sixty revises ARS fifteen five thirty-four oh four to prohibit the employment of a non-certified individual in a school district until that person has completed any disciplinary process for immoral or unprofessional conduct in another jurisdiction. So that speaks to where we have to do the proper background check. And I will say our HR department does a phenomenal job of making sure those things are already in place. Policy four dash two oh four is about mandatory reporting. So this change adds language regarding reporting abuse of vulnerable adults to existing policy. And it assists in protecting our adult special education students as they do attend our schools until the age of twenty-two. It also provides clarification that employees must report hazing. So there's bullying that they have to report, but hazing was also included. Policy five dash two one seven is graduation. And policy five dash three oh three are student records. Both of these are related to House Bill twenty-six forty-five and it adds ARS fifteen seven oh one point oh four, which requires that school districts adopt a policy to provide academic credit and other protections to foster care students enrolling in ninth through twelfth grades. Policy five dash one oh five is open enrollment. And this relates to House Bill twenty-three eleven, which amends ARS fifteen dash eight one six oh one to permit school districts to give open enrollment preference to students who have parents who are active military or were killed in the line of duty. Policy five one oh seven is a new policy. It's the Purple Star School Program and it relates to House Bill twenty-two forty-six. It adds ARS fifteen dash two forty-nine point oh one to require the Arizona Department of Education to identify school districts that provide transition support to military families and students. School districts can choose to adopt. This is an optional policy. All of our schools will choose this designation. And it's really to support the students' understanding that they do have, they can have a very transient education experience because their families do move as required by the military. But it's making sure that we have things in place to support them once they enroll in our schools. It also requires that each of our schools to hold one patriotic event per school year. Policy dash five two one nine is Arizona Online Instruction. That relates to Senate Bill fourteen fifty-seven, which adds ARS fifteen dash eight oh eight point oh one. It specifies assessment protocols in the virtual setting for school districts operating in Arizona Online Instruction or Virtual Dropout Recovery Programs. So we do have Havasu Online. And currently, when students take a state assessment, they do come here to the district office to take that assessment. The law now does allow us to set up a virtual environment for those assessments. While I do think it's good to have in the policy, it is likely we will continue our practice of having them come on campus here. It's just a little easier to navigate than trying to do that in a virtual setting for state testing. Policy five dash three oh five is our Student Code of Conduct. It's updated to expressly prohibit students from using generative artificial intelligence to plagiarize or in any way otherwise expressly authorized by the district. It also prohibits students from making a false report about an educational institution pursuant to laws ninety-seven, amending ARS thirteen dash two nine oh seven. That piece is about making a false report that would interrupt education. So things like a bomb threat or something that they know is going to require an emergency response. There's now a charge that can go with that. It's a little more serious than it has been in the past. The last thing we have in there is to prohibit the use of other nicotine products. So we have prohibiting tobacco, cigarettes, those kinds of things. But there are new products, something called ZYN, which is a nicotine powder that you can place inside your lip. And that was not covered in our policy, so it now just says other nicotine products. So as they become more available, that should cover other nicotine products. And our last one is policy five dash four oh four, which is the Administration of Medicine. This relates to House Bill twenty-one seventy-four and it amends ARS fifteen dash three forty-four point oh one and portions of Title thirty-two of the Arizona Revised Statutes to permit school districts to obtain a standing order to stock glucagon for administration to students in an emergency. The order may be obtained from health officials as designated by the Revised Statutes. And then all employees who implement diabetes medical management plans must obtain attestations from a designated healthcare provider regarding completion of statutorily required training. So that makes it a little easier. Before, all glucagon had to be provided by parents. We can now get a standing order from a healthcare professional here in Lake Havasu City that allows us to stock it in our schools in case someone is having a diabetic emergency. So again, all of these will be available, they're on that agenda item for the next month. If you have questions or any kind of concerns, we can certainly talk about anything now or we can talk about them at the next meeting when they're up for actual adoption. And as I stated, most of these are based on the legislative session that just ended and bills that were passed and put into law. Thank you, Dr. Stone. That update? All right. Action item six point one, Human Resources Approval of Qualified Evaluators for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Every year, we come before you with a list of qualified evaluators. Everyone on this list is able to issue a preliminary notice of inadequacy. We do have administrators as well as other certified staff on here in the event then administrator may need to take leave. We do have several, several options there. But these are the current list of qualified evaluators that we're presenting for your approval for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I move we approve six point one as presented.
I'll second.
Yes. Lisa Ramon? Yes. Colin Ederman?
Yes. John Massey?
Yes.
Six point two, Business Services, Architects Services, Lake Havasu High School Roof Design. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Madam President, board members. The school district submitted a grant application to the Division of School Facilities seeking funding to perform a roof assessment at Lake Havasu High School. The DSF approved the application, provided funding, and the assessments were performed. The results of the assessments determined the condition of the roof to be in need of repair or replacement. As there are many buildings at the high school, they were all in various states of deterioration, most of them needing to be replaced. As a result, that's the roof that is, not the building. As a result of the assessment, DSF recently approved additional funding for design work to be performed as the preparatory stage for creating drawings and plans to be used should DSF approve funding for construction. The architect's original proposal was received last September and was submitted in the grant application to DSF. An updated proposal was just received to show there is no change to the original proposal. Once the design is complete, the project will go back to the DSF for them to consider funding for construction. Should the DSF approve funding, the project will come back before the governing board to approve, to approve the construction project. The award design amount is three hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-three. EMC two will be procured through the SAVE contract twenty-four zero nine twenty-eight.
I'll make a motion that we approve six point two as presented.
I'll second it.
I do have one question. So in the assessment, they've already established the priority, the buildings that need the repair work the most urgently?
Correct.
Okay.
But the total design will be for the entire campus.
Okay.
Then the DSF will review the actual design and drawings. And they could prioritize and say, well, let's just say C Hall is in need. So they may fund C Hall, but not J Hall. So that'll, that'll go back before the state and then they will determine funding priority. They could come back and say the entire campus will just get awarded the contract.
Thank you.
Yes. Lisa Ramon? Yes. Colin Ederman?
Yes.
John Massey?
Yes.
Six point three, Business Services, Vouchers, Student Activity Funds and Auxiliary Funds. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Madam President, board members. Approval of vouchers for June will occur in September after the close of the encumbrance period. But vouchers for July and K-12 Student Activity Funds and Auxiliary Funds are before you tonight.
I move to approve six point three.
I'll second.
Chairman Harvey? Yes. Lisa Ramon? Yes. Colin Ederman?
Yes.
John Massey?
Yes.
Does Dr. Stone have anything to inform us tonight?
Nothing to inform you, just wanted to thank all the students and the club sponsors and teachers who were here tonight to share their stories. I mean, it's always the best part when you hear the impact that it had on our students. And I'm always impressed to hear them talk. It's hard to get up and talk in front of a group of adults, but they did an awesome job tonight. So I appreciate that and welcome everybody back to school. And also appreciate the many students who have to sit here this evening for an assignment. But we love to have you here and hope that you learn some things from the group tonight.
Thank you. Do the governing board members have anything for us tonight? All right. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Chairman Harvey? Yes. Lisa Ramon? Yes. Colin Ederman?
Yes.
James Massey?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned.